What's his name?
His name is Bonho.
Is that the name on the card? Is Bonho here?
Uh, he's just outside.
Okay, he needs to be present.
Then don't speak yet.
Don't speak yet.
Until he comes.
Is he outside? If I didn't know better, I'd be delighted to hear all these wonderful success stories. And I know that a lot of the programs are doing excellent work, so I don't want to demean them or be great for them. However, basically, I'm going to quote from Kamala in Trump, and you may have read this. Based on the urban strategies they do, Oakland shootings have gone up 16% in the last five years. It included shocking statistics that I have not seen. Two thousand people were shot in 2011, 199 of them were minors. And she concludes by saying, "So long as children are being shot and killed in our streets, so long as the city leadership is satisfied to toss around empty buzzwords, rather than engage in hard work to produce a serious plan to reduce nonviolence, Oakland will never become the world-class community that it has the potential to be. Time to stop pinning ourselves on the back and get to work." We would say, thank you, Miss Brooks, we would say, please wait, look thoroughly, review, and then pass something later.
You just have to interrupt people even when they're finishing, don't you?
He loves to do it.
Little bits.
That's not called for.
Yes, it is.
Just add a name. See, this would be my...
You said Dave Bruce.
There we go.
Say your name, please.
You said Dave Bruce.
Good name, sir.
Dave Firestone. I want to call on the city on its plan to address violence. I think that's really important. There's clearly been too much violence in the city of Oakland of late. Young men being shot on the street, unlike Antoine Jackson, John Sloan, Rodney Brown, men who were murdered in cold blood, men, murderers have still not been punished. There's a gang rampant in the city right now, running around beating people up, kidnapping people. Of course, I refer you to the Oakland Police Department. Secondly, I find it absurd, almost to the point of laughing, except that it's so sad at the same time, that when we talk about reducing violence in the city, we're receiving 11.4 million dollars as part of this Measure Y to OPD. It's like putting Neil B. Baird in charge of the picnic basket protection program. You're talking about an organization that doesn't stop crime, that commits crimes, and goes out and beats people for crimes like sitting on a blanket. A combatant of ours is in jail, possibly for the rest of his life, for sitting on a blanket. Why? Because of Oakland PD. In this city where late night live in the park is asking for $250,000 for a program that sounds great, let's provide no programs for people at night because they have something to do and can bring crime down. You know what other program provided activities at night that brought crime down? Occupy Oakland. Occupy Oakland, which is brutalized by Oakland PD, which continues to be brutalized by OPD, which had a dozen policemen following them through the streets last weekend for no good reason, for no good reason. Occupy Oakland, which had these pictures on paper that the Oakland Police Department is walking around, checking faces, calling people out by name, harassing them, assaulting them in riot gear, dragging them away, ruining their lives, for no good reason. You want to talk about violence reduction? Take that 11 million dollars away from OPD and give it back to the people.
Yeah!
Good job.
Can you pull one more? Thank you. Hi, I'm Ania, part of Oakland Youth Policy Builders, which is part of several and part of Concern One in Oakland. We need to discuss how relations between Oakland police and the community itself are not very good right now, so we're trying to see if we can come up with ideas that could make this better. In our discussions, Measure Y came up, and we actually came up with the idea that if anything parks and ramps open for longer, most times each day will keep crime rolled down. We have the using list, which can be downloaded from other websites. And yeah, so if the parks and ramps will keep the youth off the street and give them something to do, therefore crime from youth will reduce because they won't be placed and they won't have anything else to do. Thank you.
So I'm Ania, and I'm also part of Oakland Youth Policy Builders, and I'm here to urge you to please do not pass recommendations on Measure Y tonight, and instead take one of our proposals, which is to keep parks and ramps open. Like Anna said, if you have parks and ramps open, then kids could actually go there after school, like they could have a place to be. We want to keep them off the streets, like we know obviously what happens in the streets. We know that they can be susceptible to gangs, they can be susceptible to violence. Maybe they can't go home, maybe they don't have a home, maybe they have a lot of house at home and they need a safe place to be. And by keeping parks and ramps open, then people can actually have somewhere to go and build a community. Also, these resources already exist, it's just a matter of lengthening the amount of time that youth can use them and having them open during the night, we can keep the kids off the streets and stop them from like doing crimes. And yeah, you see a safe place to be, and for that reason, I urge you to like take a consideration of the proposal.
Nice feedback.
I'm Katie, and the Measure Y oversight committee recommended that the reentry position be put back into the Measure Y budget. It is the Oakland city employee that deals with reentry, and the proposal as it stands removes any city employee from overall looking at reentry. Council members asked what the difference was in services provided by the reentry specialists. The reentry specialists serve the 3,000 people who come out from incarceration every year as opposed to the 300 that might be case-damaged under this current proposal. Case management is great, but somebody needs to serve all those 3,000 people with things like the following items. Band locks was led by the reentry specialist. Three other parolees will be using a day recording center, the funding was gotten for in that way. 3,000 people have access to a resource guide now, 3,000 are eligible and invited to orientation sessions, all are impacted by a PPD explaining to businesses how they can benefit from hiring the formerly incarcerated. There are presentations on Tatariga and San Quentin. We need a person to coordinate efforts, raise these millions of dollars, create new policies, and take reentry in a serious direction as it was done until 2010, and stop being done last year when that position was eliminated and moved to a different department. Measure Y recommended moving into a place where it would be appropriate, giving it a job description, and letting it do these fantastic things it did before. Thank you.
They should look up when that buzzer goes off. Yeah.
Hello, people in charge. And I am from the suburbs of Allendale Neighbors Network, and I'm here to ask that we please keep the reentry specialists. It is a caste class reality of what happens to people when they leave prison. If they do not have the correct and helpful person in a position that is able to deal with the family, the neighborhood, and all of the many things that happen to them, we were able to use Isaac Taggart, the reentry specialist, when we had two individuals from our neighborhood that needed help, and in turn, it helped the entire neighborhood. I think that we need to realize that each people lose all of their rights after they come out of prison and they need more help from the city. Thank you.
How many can you call your names? Jay Jones, Shamira Gibson, Nene Sane, Jeff Baker, Alma Boozman, Edia Richardson, Jeremy Martinez, Ebony Miller, Azia Cladi, Lincoln Casimir, Michael Walker, Anne Anne Marks, and Charles Lee Newman.
Mr. Chairperson, members of the council, I only have a minute, I'll try to recommend this, wrap this up as quickly as I can. I'd like to point from the Measure Y mission itself, and I'm paraphrasing here, it requires an evaluation including the number of persons served and the rate of crime and violence reduced. The reason I say that is this, what you have not heard tonight in the presentation by DHS is this, there were X number of robberies in 2009, 10, 11, there were X number of robberies this year, they were reduced. There were X number of carjackings, there were X number of issues, they were reduced. There were X number of assaults, shootings, homicides, they were reduced. You did not hear that because there's a disconnect between the VHS directive and DHS and the Measure Y evaluation. It's very simple, here's how it happens. DHS gives contracts to nonprofits and sets up a set of deliverables. In order to get your contract funded, you have to deliver this issue. On the other hand, the evaluator is looking to the bandaid of the evaluation, what have you done to reduce crime and violence? There is a disconnect. Ask the evaluator to work with DHS and the police department to develop the outcomes, not the results, outcomes. How do you reduce crime and violence? We spend $140 million per day. Chair, is somebody going to save their time to you? Are they proceeding your time to you?
Cut your time to him.
They act like their time is so precious here.
I'm Michael Walker, known to the government of the state of Brooklyn, and co-chairing the Honors Organizing Committee. I was released from prison in 2009 as a violent offender. Measure Y was a program there that was supposed to reduce violence in Oakland. I attempted to give resources to Measure Y solely because I was a violent offender, I qualified for the program. I know a lot of violent offenders in Oakland who are trying to change it by Measure Y refuses to accept Oakland, even though it says it wants to reduce violence, it refuses to let those people who have already committed violence and tried to change it. I even have to go through the city of Oakland's reentry specialists and Isaac Taggart, he took a real special interest, not just finding a job, like I've watched him assist people from our community, finding housing, and like checking up on a monthly, how is the family? Are you still working? Is there anything else I can do in regards to what the crime was, to sit in prison in the first place? I think that we eliminate the reentry specialist position, a lot of violent offenders would be dis-served based on how they ticked up Measure Y. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Jasmeer, and I'm also from the Oakland Youth Policy Builders, and I wanted to first off say that you guys should hold off on passing Measure Y, where the money is going, and get in touch with the community, work really closely with the community, such as our organization actually. And what we really need to do is open up these already filled rec centers. There's a lot, everybody can come to you, but I said, what's up, you know what I'm saying? So that's all I'm saying, is what you should do is open up these already filled rec centers and create plenty jobs for students, teenagers, young adults, also utilize the space, like really utilize the space, it's not going to be a hangout, it could definitely be a hangout spots, run consistent programs and workshops, keep these kids engaged, such as myself. I might have to thank you all.
Good evening, and welcome to the Live in the Valley Washington Project, we're going to talk about crisis response and support network. I understand that we can't fund anything in the world, but there was almost $1,000 budget in the allocation for these essential homicide response services. We talked a lot about Chicago, Chicago, and what they're doing there. When Chicago seized fire, we wanted to learn about how to do hospital crisis response, they came in and tried to block, so I think for some children, we can speak to the effectiveness of these programs. Last week, I spoke to the public safety committee about this issue. That very same night, a 46-year-old man was shot in a building and gave a support ambulance to the street. And it occurs to me that this is someone that we are not supposed to serve, and truthfully, we don't have a policy to serve, and we're lucky to do our staffing, which is not funded. We may do that anyway. Thank you for understanding the situation.
Good evening, and I'm Charles here, and I'm here to speak on behalf of our youngest children in Oakland because they are my boys. Well, the child is the greatest time for public intervention, and it has a great impact. My understanding is that it's recommended that money be back in the medical conversation, and it sounds like not all of this is the best plan. Through our work at the site, to reach many more children and families, the people who are there, teachers identify children where there's homes, where there's been active violence, exposed to community violence, and help them get the services they need, compete in understand behaviors so that they're not traumatized, and children who are acting out aggressively in the classroom because they're exposed to violence, in order to get their parents, their mothers, they need at home, provide crisis response to the entire classroom when shootings have happened in the neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. And so...
Because he likes it.
...we can delay this time, that we can help these children deal with the things that they're witnessing, and we can prevent them from needing medical services later on, future, uh, juvenile, uh, playgrounds, and special education. So, thank you.
Selective enforcement.
Good evening, my name is Madam Martinez, and I'm here to be in the Department of Public Health. I am a community capacity building specialist for KIM, standing for Community Assessment, Planning, Education, Evaluation. I'm here in support of the DHS Park Initiative, and the reason that I'm in support of it is because attached to the DHS Park Initiative is the City-City Neighborhood Initiative, which we've been working very hard with for the past 40 years. The commitment of the structure of the count has been 4 to 1 to what the city has put in, but nevertheless, it's a collaboration. Nevertheless, it's something that's going on in our community, and it has some changes, and it has some good outcomes. Some of the outcomes that we can mention is, like in this past year, this past 12 years, we have placed 156 people in who drop training programs. Some of the drop training programs that we have collected from the city, some of the programs like... Well, I'm here to, I have some support, I'm sorry, I'm here to support, I have a lot of information on that, but I really hope that you all support the Park Initiative because it's married to the City-City Neighborhood Initiative, which we are doing in those in our communities. Thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
How many can you call your names? Lisa Park, Mona Left, Evelyn Jackson, Felicia Chachore, Margaret Gordon, Amber Blackwell, Max Alstott, Ron Muhammad, Stephanie, and William Byron.
Good evening, everyone. I'm only here to really talk about my experience in this meeting. This Oakland Island Initiative project, which led our justice group, lead people to support them and trust, uh, trust driver center in this local, and who are to partner with Brad Holt and opportunity for reentry, for engineering, engineering job, with the reentry specialists. We were hoping to hire 15 reentry people to come and support, you know, this work with this Oakland, and this is like something capable of other partners being a reentry outside, counseling trucks, engaging in the running by engineering, uh, traffic coordinators. So, I'm willing to receive the need to have the reentry specialists be a part of the community, and be a real part of the earth, and that is the basis of the earth of our soul. So, thank you very much. Thank you, everyone.
Hello, Stephanie. This is a lot of money. So, I'll remind you, what we all found out at least how it's built in you, and you probably all, they really should have known, who said Occupy Oakland reduces crime rates in this neighborhood by 17% in two weeks?
Nineteen.
Nineteen. Yeah. And then all the others, you can just talk some of this. So, I'm not a reentry program, so I don't reduce crime, but I don't see any evidence that programs have helped reduce crime, really, uh, this whole Atlanta problem. I think we should have initiative to supply Occupy Oakland, because, you know, initiatives with some of this money to continue on with, you know, feeding a thousand meals a day and people in need, giving people food, helping people through their frustrations, and how this system doesn't work. Please don't, and this is anyways, tonight, you have a lot more to learn before you could really get out of here.
I'm in support of anything that's good. Measure Y, the mayor's pet project, has not done what she had said that was a proposal for this measure to do. I have not seen any Measure Y anti-violence people in the streets, we just saw a show of force recently, two weeks ago, eight young people, other than that, they have not been that visible. I know that at the H Street Park, the crime that's committed there, crimes, the circumstance, drug dealing, and I would like to know if, this is his passion, I hope it's not, if they will resolve the PTSD issues with the young people who are suffering the worst because of the lack of healthcare reform, and all the nonprofits such as FERC, such as NAMI, will actually step up and instead of waiting for people to come to their office to actually hit the streets the way that they're supposed to. So, Measure Y is supposed to hit the streets, they're not hitting the streets, it's like cleaning, dressing, pay. Right now is not the time for posturing, the mayor's not present, I'm pretty sure the city administrator, she backed us, she left the role, they were backdoor with the proposal. Nothing can be backdoored, it's just $2 million that needs to be allocated correctly and not corrupting the project because the mayor likes using water blocks and all of this.
Good evening, I'm Howard, I'm here, I'm the president of the city, I'm the president of the long-term conference, I tell you what a pleasure it is to be standing here at this podium and not entering the queue. And that's, that's, that's the reality of it. I came out, made a lot of mistakes, like the lady said, and reentry program has been great. I've in turn been invited back to talk to others at the National Association of Children. Today, I worked with one of the larger retailers, I have brought this from last in the district in number three in Northern California. I am a success story of the reentry program, and I was promised to look at support. Thank you very much.
My name is Mika Fortin, I would like to be a letter by Molly Warren Mortad, she is a preschool teacher at International Child Development Center, and she's worked very closely with the mental health consultants, and that is provided under the Measure Y certified mental health services strategy. I ran her response to the possible end of the funding needed to seek mental health consultants in Oakland and high school districts, child development centers. I have worked in conjunction with Fabriana Sanchez for the past two years at International Child Development Center. She has provided invaluable service for both my help and the families we serve. We have had many children and families that have had child violence, behavioral issues, or problems of violence in their home. It has been a learning experience for me to find ways to deal with child behavior with techniques and ideas that Sanchez has given. She's also helped me to learn to speak with the parents about their child and their own situation that they've been experiencing. The families of mine have benefited greatly from her support and responsibility. It is extremely important to continue the funding with this program.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Rhonda, and I'm also here to speak for the younger survivors and the mental health consultation in early childhood and head start centers. Playing C and D is going to help consultation these centers is actually strategic buildings. We catch children who, and families who otherwise fall through cracks, children, one of our consultants started working with the child whose father was shot in the middle of the summer. We have ongoing children in this situation. We work with children whose families are, both parents are incarcerated. We work with children who are exposed to many conditions of violence. Indeed, the mental health lab centers that were mentioned are not trained in working with children who are in the cloud. Also, by creating these services in school, where in fact, effectively, who are actually affecting the most crucial environments for children, their school environment and their home environment, making these services available to children at home as well as at school.
Carol Allen, Devon Thompson, Carlo Teteo, Tony Gassaki, Alejandro Benitez, Jeffrey Gottfried, Marlene Hurst, Pamela Weston, Reverend Dr. Jessica Lowry, Shannon Ellen, Omar Nissara, I'm sorry, Amia David, I think Fania, I'm not sure. Reverend Spinn, if you want.
Kevin Thompson, one of the nice few guys, I think that half of you are on Facebook, because I want the other half to be a friend, and I've got a pending request. Actually, I know people, but not pretty much all of you. Was she as good as Glenn, she down Measure Y, did you look at it, did you have people look at it? It just seems, it needs more than that. So, that's the first thing. The second thing is, there's an issue about, it is, I live in Savannah Park, I lived there about three years, I can go around and say that I have used times in Savannah Park, you know, so like somebody comes up and says, oh yeah, we just kind of start like programs that program, we have got measurements, and that's what I'm seeing. The reason why there's less times in Savannah Park is because there's certain people that are there. That's the truth. And so, you check that, it's very unfortunate people on streets, and you know what the truth is. So, I, you know, there's somebody here who can talk about different worlds, it is different world, so, so, thank you.
Reverend Spenn LaRose, as he directed, City Clerk, I believe, I'm not the last one, I have to clarify today. Firstly, I call your attention to the fact that the recommendation, going to receive the report request, not to grant the appropriation request. The calendar for the RFP assumes that a request can be granted tonight, which is impossible under the Ralph Brown Act, because the notice here on the gentleman says to receive it, not to match upon. So, I think, just because of the Brown Act, perhaps I have at least one more meeting before we actually tap on and grant the request for the city council to approve recommendations, blah, blah. Second, the idea of having psychiatrists and other properly so-called mental health professionals for preschoolers is ludicrous. I can understand pre-counseling, but there are no norms for psychiatry in that age group. There is no scholarly notion of what mental order is in that age group, so having a properly so-called mental health professional treating anybody anywhere here that is totally acting as if it's a problem. Thank you.
I'm the chair to the city administrative, I'm the side looking at the agenda, and the incident's receiver reports request.
Way to go. We got books on the table.
I can turn to the question. And I would never change, on the black line, it is never that received report, and but, so we didn't appropriately admit that to that.
Sarah, I'm going to ask you this all during...
After, not at the stand, but then after, it's a dirty question.
Spenn, you rock my world, son. Spence, you rock my world, son.
Maybe if you guys stopped sleeping, you'd have caught that.
If it is so received, the report and request to approve regulations.
Definitely is as bright as hell.
So it's a request, it's both receiving a report and request to approve recommendations for budget. I'm asking, is it appropriately addressed after an action item of this one time, the issue that's before it? If the recommendations are listed in the document, it would be, there's no resolution here. The resolution is required to have any some that. It's a resolution required, I'm asking for the, you know, the same. I would know that a resolution.
Ask for a parliamentary.
She can't read it's wrong because she hasn't been paying attention.
When that structure is approved, we release the RFP, and then the resolution comes back to you with actual specific agencies to be funded. And at that point, we are enabling what's. I appreciate your response, Sarah, I was asking city attorney for everything. Which I thought, sure.
Ooh, a little pissy man.
I would be like, here, please, maybe, no, it is. As I said, the recommendations are approved, I must check it, and so you can ask both to receive the report and to take action, but you can by motion to approve those recommendations. There's a rec, there's a resolution here, under the charter, the council can act by motion, resolution or ordinance. Unless the resolution or ordinance is required by specific means, then there's none to apply here. The reason I take the trust of resolution is because in some cases, there are specific requirements related to certain funding constraints, which I wouldn't agree with. Hold on, can I ask just another clarification? Is there a reason why the title is different on the report than on the, um, the?
Yes, it is.
Well, in terms of the legal requirement, I'm trying to understand, because a part of what the Brown Act says is that the agenda is supposed to give the public sufficient information that they desire to come down to common and they could. And the agenda says one thing, and it doesn't have the same title as the item that's in our document. So I'm just trying to understand if, as a legal matter, whether or not.
We couldn't access the report.
It doesn't say, it, it, well. Number ten, you can read them to word for word, and it, words on word, on the initiative, it says, receive a report. Is there no receipt?
And are you reading the?
I'm reading the title on the green sheet, it does report and request, it does not say receipt. Which is different, usually we, in a committee, if we did receive an information report, um, and so I'm asking, is there any legality to the difference in the notes on the agenda and the notes on the paper? There is one requirement that the report itself has identical language, these are identical in substance. On the agenda, the city clerk notices the specific actions that she has added, receive a report, the department's court, because that's the action that the council would respect the report. Secondly, it does request for the council to approve regulations and the municipal report, particularly substate. So it's not inconsistent, it raises any legal concerns without the adequacy, it doesn't understand the legal. And once the report aligns with the national, that's the authority from subject to keep, to take action on the recommendations. And the resolution is.
Oh, okay, I think the city clerk.
Make sure that the substance is totally fine, legality is totally fine. Why the objection, do you think, ridiculous?
Ridiculous?
That's slightly disrespectful, is it not?
That's extremely disrespectful.
Wow. We don't respect how anybody do.
I'm Carol Warren Allen, my time here is in local, and I'm here in support of the reentry specialist position held by Isaac Taggart. I would also like to say that I would hope that, and I agree that this, uh, particular item needs to be considered and held over. Because I think that we need to vet, uh, even some of the, uh, people that are over him. He has the experience, he's from the demographics of being released openly, has done a great job for the past three years. Uh, has been the only employee in the position, and yet has still requesting tonight having him, who represents a population that they're trying to change and help. And to me, to see his position removed does not make one bit of sense. I have known him for a number of years, he was a student at Lainey College. And during that time, he helped young Nia get books, jobs, uh, helped them with family violence services, all the things that I was able to do. He received, uh, the chancellor's award at Lainey, I'm sorry, for the whole Ralph and district, which was the top, uh, student. He's now attending Holy Mays while he's working, was single parent, has raised his son that is now at Morehouse in Premane. For the past two years, he's, uh, done a outstanding job, uh, that I have seen in the reentry.
Director.
And I would just highly recommend that all of you do the right thing, especially you, Mr. Brady.
Director.
Can't help, and anybody who kept the measure Y alive. Thank you so much, and have a happy Halloween.
Thank you.
I'm Shannon Ellis with Family Violence Law Center. Um, we run the Family Violence Intervention Unit and are also a partner in the Early Childhood Mental Health Collaborative and have been since the beginning of Measure Y. Uh, I'm here first to offer a point of clarification. There was a suggestion that the mental health services be separated from the Family Violence Intervention Unit, that a hundred thousand dollars be pulled off. Whether that happens or not, whether they're separate or together, we're already working in collaboration, we're already part of partnership, there's no impact on the work. The impact on the work is that even if we pull off a hundred thousand dollars, we're still facing a seventy-seven thousand dollar cut to the early childhood mental health workers. And to that point, this is a critical investment in the future of Oakland. Children zero to five are going through tremendous brain development, and exposure to violence at that time has an effect that is profound and long-lasting. And if we have services to youngest children in Oakland, it is short-sighted and very, very problematic. Thank you.
Hi, Reverend Dr. Jasper Lowry, uh, street outreach pastor at City Road, and, uh, also a citizen here, young raised. Wanted to have, uh, the, uh, first street outreach team to be informed and develop the guidance for the streets. Uh, I just wanted to be reminded that our main focus was the process to be. So even though we had everyone in position, and we were excited, out and running, and we were grabbing people and processing, sending through the channels and systems of measure Y programs and the knowledge and every piece of measure Y we're providing that fitted individual writing and reacting. So I just want to be reminded that Oakland A violence came down forty percent because of those efforts. Where we are now, I think we might be getting a little too hot-headed, we need to bring it back down and begin the process to people where they are. And the need of the people alone to change in administration. But one thing we did use was our reentry specialists who called me Sunday, it mattered Saturday, after hours, whatever the need the person was, the pro, the process didn't stop, it was like he wasn't ever on work again. So I just want to be reminded that it's all about processing the violence as we get them through our systems. Thank you.
My name is Alejandro, and I have, uh, lived in Oakland for most of my life. I've experienced, uh, problems with the city firsthand. I go to Oakland and the Los Angeles Street Academy, and I have, uh, been working with California Youth Outreach for two years. California Youth Outreach has really affected my life in a positive way. They actually care about the youth and stopping violence. They say that kids are the future of biocentric programs, like California Youth Outreach and others, that are actually working that. Showing that is a lot, this program has reached out to many of the families and has helped them, uh, find success. And I know that because I know them, because they're one of those bad kids, you know, that were missing and didn't care, had no, uh, really, had no goal in life. Uh, that you're talking about a program that is, uh, actually helping to stop violence is not the right choice. Would you feel for, need programs like this to help them overcome their problems and help them raise a better person? Okay, some programs like this is not the right, actually, taking the resources away from the youth is not, is wrong. Showing me that they are the future by supporting programs such as this one.
Going to go join.
Say, to, to the speaker, I think somebody, Alejandro, uh, I think somebody gave you some wrong information. Actually, this proposal is going to increase the amount like at this point of street outreach. And, and CYO is wanting to.
Increase some money going to the police to rescue people.
Uh, hi, my name is Omar, I'm here to talk about my experience with CYO and Measure Y. I want to start off by saying that I really do, uh, definitely improve, like my way of being, my, my anger that I used to have, like, hey, I'm really, I'm really thankful that they have my life right now because they helped me get a job, they helped me go through that process of court. They helped me do everything and that, they showed me appreciation and encouragement. And I'm really thankful for them, and I just want to let them know that. There's no point for them to like to cut their, uh, their funds because, I mean, if it was me, I would increase them because we need more people. I don't want to throw them around, and we just need them, we just need them there. Basically, Sean said, it's a, it's a small point, but we can have the funds. Because they're always there for us, and just to help us. Thank you.
Good evening, uh, these two young men that were just, uh, speaking, were referring to the school-based program for California Youth Outreach, which is under Measure Y, I myself, Carlo Teteo, and they, uh, oh, sorry, say try. I work for our school-based, and two continuation schools in West Oakland and East Oakland. I'm a youth intervention specialist and a quick success story progress. One of my clients, uh, prior to working with him, was using cocaine, using heroin, gaining height, and today, or probably also, he's been shot, and today, he's enrolled in the Lady Welding Program. Some top of the staff who are at that program, say he's from LeBron James Program, one of the brightest students I've ever met. Very knowledgeable, but he has one foot in and one foot out. You know, um, our job is to plant the seed and to help it grow. The seeds that we are planting is to prepare themselves for college, get jobs instead of staying into these gang lives. And I just want to say that our school base is very successful and, uh, look for people. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, council, councilperson, and the rest of the, uh, distinguished councilmembers. Um, I'm a big fan because, uh, all is the same, the executives and the therapists surround the process. And everyone has equal access to the process. Um, one thing we like to say, we're the total supporter of Isaac Taggart. He, uh, he's the, the example we use a lot, he showed stopping something in the process and gave access to people that were in need. Uh, one of the best comparisons of, of anybody that I can see. But then there's other side of Measure Y that was not always tied to outcomes. And having certain institutions monopolize the funds, we don't think that's cool. So we would hope that Measure Y further would be attached to outcomes and not to who has, uh, leadership. Are you in for a conference?
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Stephanie Sakachi, um, I'm here for California Youth Outreach. And I work in the school-based program, I'm a youth intervention specialist. I work at Community Day School, uh, Blackwell Bottom Academy, Street Academy. And just on here to just tell you how essential it is to keep funds where they are for the school-based programs. Uh, these kids are, some, some of the, the bad kids, there's a potential to get placed, they belong to them, but some of these kids are, are uncharted, they're drug, they're all in the class in school and they're out of place. Sort of like the bridge between the students and the administrators. So, I mean, it's huge for us to be on this campus and have therapists, counselors, uh, principals referring to us and our expertise in this area, gang, back to students and violence in schools. Just us being there every day, we're, you know, well-received, and the impact on the campuses is huge, so. I'd say, keep the funds where they are, increase if possible. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Jeffrey Gottfried, I'm also with California Youth Outreach. Um, to clarify the young men we're talking about, they're talking about the area convention stragging, which is being cut back. Um, part of that stragging is the school-based stragging. Now, I understand that there's not the funds to fund every program, um, fund every service. But we have to look at the big picture. Big picture is, if you truly want to save the city, we have to invest some type of funds into school-based services. School-based services to include case management, academic intervention, and truancy reduction. The schools we serve, which include Dewey, Community Day School, Rusdale, Street Academy, um, and, um, one more, one more, one more. But, these schools have some of the, um, young people that are classified as being at risk. If our guys are taken off the ground for, uh, any period of time, uh, chaos come back to the school, i.e. gang violence, violence. Um, and our guys also acted as an intervention violence. There's no standard tax prevention, but our guys prevent violence and reject, and take the program away in any form or fashion, uh, can be very harmful to our city. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I think that Sarah was going to say something in particular, I didn't, I didn't want to do it.
I just wanted to clarify again, uh, we have previously had a separate fund for gang strategy that the all ed schools bid on and did a fabulous job with. We took the case management dollars and put them at the JJC strategy, because those young people are coming back out to schools and traditionally have gone to the all ed schools. So we didn't cut the dollars to the gang strategy, we moved them. Um, so I think there's some advocacy saying it's better to have a, a school-based program, but we felt the integration of the JJC would be stronger. So I just, you know, there's still a point to be made during the term, that we didn't cut the dollars to the strategy.
Hello, my name is Pamela Weston, and the reason I'm here is because I've worked to fulfill the public safety for the last seventeen years. If you're looking for a solution for Oakland, then don't go back where you started. In the facility I work, evil men try, but it's good men who like to act. In the course of being with you for seventeen years, I've also had the blessing of the, in, in main self-help sponsor, where they proposed a reentry process and I'm program. In June, we did, we talked about health education, we talked about community and family, we talked about the crisis. And I told them to really come home and stay home, you have to change your internal condition without, without commitment. While I'm here on behalf of Isaac Taggart and City of Oakland, is because you guys came in in June with Minister Lowry, Marlene Herr, the housing commissioner, and Dr. Langford. Uh, we have a division we have for entrepreneurial businesses. The folks are aware of their gang, who that they are, and what that they need, and celebrating the value of personal and father, the incarcerated population behind it. And Mr. Lowry has a vision for a life learning center, shared with the incarcerated, that said, and he came up here that your heart should be their home, because they're the fathers, the husbands, and dads, and so in our facility.
Keep going. No, you're good, keep going.
Don't listen to him. Man, you're brave.
What you're saying is good, staff, then.
I think any, nobody's wrong, I'm a reverend. I really wanted to look at key, key, key history with this specialist. For a year and a half, I've been volunteering with Isaac Taggart as a part of a class. For a year and a half, I've been volunteering with Isaac Taggart as a part of a class, host of usually public rights study across this policy, that I see the work that he's been doing.
Call for another one.
Thank you, Dr. Taggart, with this initiative, it's great for our community and family. City of Oakland is making positive difference in the new year, five percent for your kids. I want you also to look at realizing that we consider what we need to, for ladies there. In a year and a half, I've been working with Isaac Taggart on his every detail, I see the impact that this person is making to the community, and also seeing a change in ways of life, and, you know, it's important. I want you to really look at how important this has for the track record and the work that's been happening. And if this one's going to be in there, as if you're in a responsible state, California is going to speak their heart or tax ballot, or educational opportunities, which are created. Not the house of prison, that costs fifty thousand dollars a year. City of Oakland is making a effort, not to do this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I believe I'll need to call.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah. She wanted to speak on...
Oh, you have ten minutes.
She gets the official six minutes.
It's ten.
I believe it's ten minutes.
Ten.
Yeah?
Yep.
I'm looking my best to say we could be ten, I'm trying to...
Okay, so I just want to start off finishing with the, I think that's before this event, basically, before I go into the potential. Anyway, I want to finish talking about how criminalizing, how the police department is criminalizing and aggressing, because they come to beat the home when we can't arrest them, but they're just taking them and arresting them on the table. Certainly been arrested for, you know, writing a blog, signing poetry, or like I said, writing a bike and holding it in the peace sign. I personally, during the day of the Egyptian solidarity march, after the Oakland Police Department had dragged a man just through the streets until his skull were torn, while we were about to march with any solidarity to the Egyptian women who consequently had here, were dragged through the streets with their coat worn like this hat right here, outside the plaza, right in front of the Hugby. And right after that, we were walking past the police station from the 13th floor, seven windows, or from the right-hand side, hot water thrown on me while I'm recording on my Ustream, similarly to how this young lady is doing now. So I'm saying that giving more money to the police department, in effect, to decrease crime or to decrease violence is not working, because they are in effect the ones increasing crime and increasing violence and inciting crime. That's exactly what's happening now. So, I want to say that these abuses have not only been supported by Maricon, but the orders have been initiated, a lack of oversight provided on Maricon's behalf to make sure that the laws are actually being obeyed by the same officers that are being called upon to uphold them. The emails uncovered by KTDU depict the fact that there's a conspiracy between Mayor Quan and Howard Jordan when it comes, when it was written, "I don't know how you want to share this good news of the crime decreasing by nineteen percent since Occupy, because it's in opposition of our message that Occupy is increasing violence." These are the types of things that make me question the ethics of those who've been elected to represent and protect the community, and furthermore, makes me wonder in what way will the funds be used, especially since there's no guarantee that there has been any legitimacy to the allocation of the funds thus far, and I'm sure several others do doubt that there are any other, do doubt that the funds would be used appropriately if they are given to the Oakland Police Department. Excuse, Councilmember De La Fuente, I was reading an article, forgive me if I can't, De La Fuente, excuse me, Councilmember De La Fuente. I was reading an article, and I'm sorry if I can't remember the exact source, but within that article, you were referring to someone who was attacking your stance on the Occupy or against the Occupy movement. In that, you were quoted saying, well, how would you feel if it was them against you? And two that I say, as a representative of the people, you should not feel as if the people are battling against you. As a representative, you should feel as if you are on the side of the people and they are trying to talk to you, and what you are hearing is frustrated voices who are gathering outside saying, "You're not hearing me." Specifically, like right now, when I was addressing you by your name, but you were not hearing me. So I'm like, these are the types of things that people are saying, and I don't think it's an irrational response, I think it's a frustrated response, I think we all need to be patient with each other to move past it and work on. Anyways, I want to tell a story really quickly, very quickly, about my mother, Ms. Brooks, as you would know, 3436 Kingsland Avenue. Unfortunately, my parents had split up and my mother was living by herself, however, living right around the corner from Desley Brooks. At about one o'clock in the morning, someone had broken into my mom's home when she was there alone, fifty-something years old. Now, she called the Oakland Police Department, amazingly, they did not have the resources to send to a homeowner, tax-paying citizen within Oakland. However, if I get pulled over in my little eighty-nine Honda for like running past a stop sign, all of a sudden, there are four police cars behind me and there's a whole bunch of stuff. Or if we're in Occupy and I'm sitting out here knitting a scarf for somebody who's cold and homeless, we can have a whole bunch of police officers just standing there. And at that point, I don't think it's an appropriate allocation of funds, and to give them millions of dollars more to do what? To literally play Angry Birds? I have it on my Ustream, I have cards for you if you'd like to see it. I documented the fact that we are literally paying people to sit there and not do anything, not protect the community, but instead intimidate them out of, I don't know, having a voice, participating in the process. People are afraid to come down because of the violence of the police department, not because of the violence in Occupy. I'm down there all the time by myself with a pink Hello Kitty backpack, like, I'm in my laptop with a cell phone. I'm not, I'm more concerned about police violence than I am about being mugged by people who I don't know or who are covering their faces and hiding their identities so they aren't targeted by the police department. So this is a very real concern that we need to pay attention to, instead of pointing our fingers and saying those are crazy anarchists. Like, no, it's written within the Declaration of Independence that at the point to where our government becomes abusive or becomes oppressive, that we have the right and the duty as citizens, like, if we're going to claim that these are our rights, the constitutional Bill of Rights, if these are our rights, our only duty is to protect them. And at the point to where the government is viewed as being abusive or being oppressive to people, and offering, allowing stayaways to where citizens cannot come address their concerns to their council members, like, this is systematically disenfranchising people, it's causing more of a muted, excuse me, muted voice scenario, and at that point, it's only going to make people more frustrated, it's going to make your jobs harder. So I'm like, instead of like butting heads, let's pay attention to each other and let's put down, like, let's stop all of this segregation, let's stop all of this otherizing, let's stop, you know what I mean, like, not agreeing with each other and arguing for the sake of arguing, and just try to really focus on the issue, on, focus on fixing things. So going on to focusing on fixing things, let me talk more about the financial matters. First of all, within the City of Oakland specifically, I believe that averages about four dollars and fifty cents a day for food stamps, and then a lot of people who have, especially black men in Oakland who like to wear locks, and I want to call them dreads because that's not, they're called locks, but I'm like, if they have locks and they're culturally inclined to want to do that, nine times out of ten, they don't look clean, clever enough for a job. Or maybe they can't pass the background check because they sold some weed day before medicinal marijuana was legal in California. And at that point, an increased police presence is effectively racist. Like, it doesn't stop me from embezzling millions of dollars from a corporation, as a matter of fact, I'll come buy you coffee and have doughnuts with you, you know, but what it does stop is people who are disenfranchised in lower socioeconomic communities from doing other things, like maybe selling some weed, or, I'm sorry, prostitution. Like, I'm not entirely a fan of these things, but when you're trying to survive or provide for children in an economy where tax-paying citizens are trying to provide services for disenfranchised individuals, but no matter how many taxes they pay, those services are steadily being cut, like, people are going to try to do what they can to just survive. So instead of being viewed as survivalist within an economy that's not providing for them, they're being criminalized, and it's making, it's just making everything worse, and it's not really helping anyone. So not only that, we have unemployment that's higher than congressional approval rating, and that's problematic. We have more vacant houses than homeless people. So when Tiff and Mandela, they go to jail for, or having, excuse me, the foreclosed home tied up in a civil matter, and then the police come and arrest them for that, without the judge having ruled on who exactly has the rights over that property, like, how did the police even have the authority to go in there when a judge had not ruled on that matter yet? You see, so these are the types of things where Occupy is coming into the community, I'm sorry, Measure Y, you're charging money, but Occupy is doing it for free, everything will take. And so I'm like, when people in the community pay taxes, and then also go home and try to see if they can find extra blankets, or find extra shoes, or knit blankets, or scarves, or whatever, to take care of individuals who have now come to Frank Ogawa Plaza, also named Oscar Grant Plaza at this time, because that's where they know they can get resources. It doesn't matter, because I'm from Oakland. I know when the homeless people sleep underneath the walkway, white manual, it's not a problem. If they're at the gas station asking me for some change so they can wash my windows, it's not a problem. But when citizens come and say, hey, come to City Hall, because we're too, excuse my language, pissed off about this, you know, we're paying taxes and these services aren't being offered, like, come to City Hall, we will give them to you for a grievance of grievances. When we get here, we're met by the police department, instead of being met by concerned representatives who will want to hear our issues and how we think we can fix them. So that's also more problematic. So I'm saying, instead of having a war on drugs, because we spend more on the war on drugs than most drug dealers make selling the drugs. So I'm like, at the point to where we're spending so much money on the war on drugs and it's not really working, can we have like a war on abusive politics and systematic oppression, or, you know what I mean, abusive law enforcement? That would be totally awesome if we could do that, or get rid of the word war, period, and stop having abusive and violent rhetoric fueling people's minds and say, let's have a fixed project, let's have a project to actually get things done, and don't hide, like, abusive practices, I'm sorry, Measure Y, within the abusive, within the legislation. And I would like to refer to a couple things I would say really quickly. First of all, the services like childcare that already exists have wait lists that mirrors Section A. So a lot of people can't wait a year to figure out if their kid is going to be able to go to childcare, because Home Depot doesn't care what your situation is, and if you want to keep a job to pay your rent, then you're going to have to figure something out. And honestly, these type of things make me question the basis of the statistics that we're gathered from, because I live in East Oakland, and I don't see a decrease in crime. I see stuff happening all the time, so the only time I see Measure Y is a sign in somebody's yard. I don't see anything actually happening, as to the point where I walk to the store and there are shell casings on the ground, so I don't think Measure Y is doing much of anything. Not only that, citizens have lost face, lost face and decreasing the violence with police because the police, like I said before, have been the source of the violence. And also, there's not a Ninety-Eighth Street in Oakland, so I see how familiar you are with the areas that you are working closely within when you refer to Ninety-Eighth Street in East Oakland. It's an avenue, I'm sorry, there's no Ninety-Eighth Street in East Oakland. So the streets are in downtown and West Oakland, so just in case you didn't know, I want to let you know that. And then demographics are the basis of your research in unemployment programs, you should know that the strategies for crime prevention should include knowing the people and actual strategy, just placement of officers does not work to decrease crime. And about the legality, excuse me, about the legality and the insult that came from Mrs. Kerrigan about that it's ridiculous, this bothers me. As a representative of the people who is being paid by the taxes of the people, is this how you consider all the concerns of the people who voice them? And if so, why is Occupy getting so much heat? It's brought down crime, it feeds the poor and homeless, it provides clothes, bullets, and other supplies in the same citizens who have been slept up in the car. So if they're, you know what I mean, like, I don't understand why you would say that you feel as if a citizen's concern is ridiculous. I'm sorry, I still have speaking time. You know what I mean, if a citizen's concern is ridiculous, and you're an elected representative, any person on this council is a representative, then no concern should be too ridiculous, just like no question is stupid. It should be, it should be considered seriously, because we are citizens and we are, we deserve to be listened to and taken seriously. So when you say that you take us, you think it's ridiculous, and I come in here trying to, you know, trying to, I'm sorry, I know I'm over time here, but start trying to respect the process, trying to be very respectful, not by taking the council, because I would like to be viewed with respect as well. I take it that's it, especially after you speak to someone who likes to spend, who, people take him for granted, but he's a very smart individual. So I would, I'm sorry, I would really like to be answered as far as, like, do you really feel as if the concerns of citizens are ridiculous?
Yeah, I would really like the opportunity to answer you. I was actually referring to the, I know her time is up, but I would like to respond, which is, I was not referring to any citizen, I was referring to the procedural issue that my colleague raised. I was not referring to anything that you also... Actually, you raised that issue. Well, I was, I missed the fact that you raised it, I, I still think it is, I can, let me, let me say this, if a citizen raised it, I can see that, that you would, might think that that was an issue, my colleague knows better.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah! Woo! Thank you. [applause] Many ridiculous things, many ridiculous things, and I would like the opportunity to do that. No, because she said something that was inappropriate. A resident raised the issue, and on behalf of that resident, I raised the question. It wasn't a legal, it was a different question that I directed to the city attorney, not you. You think that you can answer legal questions, but oftentimes you are wrong. In this, you can't get answered. And so you pay to yourself, to yourself.
Regardless, you're a resident too, Brooks.